Greetings and welcome to the moderator's preview of town meeting. My name's Tom Murphy, town moderator, and I'm happy to be here with you, speaking with everyone, and with me is new town manager, Tony Marino.
Morning.
Janice Skelton, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and Heidi Pack, Chair of the Planning Board. I had done this program when I first started as moderator in 2011, and it sort of lost steam, but with a new town manager, I thought we'd start it up again. Just a preview to give folks an idea of what to expect at the upcoming town meeting. This year, town meeting is October 16th, 7 o'clock at the IPAC. What we'd like to do this morning is just sort of give you a broad brush overview of what the 17 articles are, what they address, the upside, downside of each, and maybe a little bit about the procedures or a couple things, there are a couple changes, as always happens. But just generally, we have six articles that are moving money around. Referred to generally sometimes as housekeeping, but it's really accounting, and the manager will give us some insight on that. We have four zoning articles, another article that's not zoning, but it has to do with energy, three charter changes, and a few miscellaneous things. Gift of land to the town, plastic bag bylaw amendment, and some money for Byatt Park. So let's start with Article 1. Tony, tell us about this. This is called amending the town budget. So we're amending the budget we passed in May of this year and moving some money around, is it some $35,000? What's this about?
Sure, I'll jump in. I'll do Article 1 and 2 if you don't mind.
Sure.
They're both the same pot of money. So what it is, is when we do the budget every year, we are conservative with what the state aid's going to be. We take the prior year's number and carry that forward. The state always tends to give us a little bit more in state aid. So what we do is, but we don't have those numbers till after town meeting happens.
Right.
So what we do is at the fall town meeting is we take the additional sums of money that came in from state aid, and we appropriate a certain amount to the town's budget, the general fund budget, and the remaining funds go to the school budget.
Okay.
So in this year, $35,790 will be additional monies added on to the town's budget, and then $45,539 will be added on to the school's budget.
Okay. So it isn't that we didn't catch something in spring, it's just the numbers have changed from the start.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
And I see that FinCom and the Select Board have been unanimous in support of both these.
We are. Typically, we do support additional money coming into the budget. Our conversation on this is, was it allocated appropriately, and we went according to the traditional percentages? So, yes.
Okay. So then the next two are similarly amendments to the Essex Tech and Whittier Folk Tech.
Yeah. Actually, Article 3, really quick, is just, we have some additional funds, a smaller amount, $4,337 came in for a homeless transportation reimbursement that goes to the school fund.
Right.
So that's just additional funds that came in to offset some bills that we spent, you know, monies that were already spent. So that comes in. Article 4 and 5, as you referred to, are both, first one is Essex Tech. That one, basically, we go off of our prior year's enrollment in the school to come up with a number, and we always go a little conservative, a little on the high side. When the enrollment numbers actually came in, the bill that we got from Essex Tech was a little lower than what we budgeted. So in this case, we budgeted, I believe it's $189,000, and the actual invoice from Essex Tech came in at $141,168. So we've been reallocating those funds and just moving them around on the budget. And on Whittier, a little smaller, we're a little closer on that one. We budgeted $520,000, and the actual bill came in at $514,022.
Okay.
And then we just take that money, move it around into the general fund, and it'll be addressed in a later article.
Okay, good. Janice?
Yeah, so the Finance Committee also supports the movement of this money. For those who don't quite understand what's going on here is, as part of the consortium for both Essex and Whittier Folk Tech, we pay on a per student basis for our citizens that choose to go to a technical high school for a different education. So the funds that we allocate each year cover their tuition as well as their transportation.
And Finance Committee was unanimous in support?
We were unanimous in support of this.
As were the Select Board.
Correct.
Okay. So six, here we run into some disputes. It looks like the FinCom vote was 3-3-3. We'll get to that. Tony, can you tell us, this is a citizen, well, it's brought by the Select Board.
Correct.
But the proponent is a student.
Yes.
Tessa DeVoe, and she's looking to amend the plastic bag bylaw that some of her co-conspirators passed a couple of years ago.
Yes.
There were six of them, you may recall, that came in, and the only people that I've seen in eight years that got a standing ovation.
Yes.
For their presentation.
I heard, yes, yeah.
Did a great job. So Tessa's now here to amend one of the definitions, a couple tweaks, if you will, to that. Tell us about that.
Yes, so basically, what it was is, there was a plastic bag restriction at stores, but it didn't really talk about size of the bags and really the thickness of the plastic. So some stores, i.e. CBS, and others, had bought a thicker plastic, you know, and were still using plastic bags because we weren't, this bylaw wasn't clear in the definition, essentially.
Well, what the original, what the definition is, that a plastic bag is three mils.
Correct.
Or less.
Yep.
And so companies that use four mils or more.
Right, or thicker, correct.
Can do an N run on it.
Yep. So basically, this changes, as to say, any bag made of plastic has to, you know, is banned.
Okay.
So it really pushes towards either paper or the reusable bags. And it also just, I think, gets rid of, yeah, gets rid of the biodegradable bag definition, and then talks, has a little bit more language to define a reusable bag. Shall mean a sewn bag with stitched handles, and it gets a little more descriptive on that.
Okay.
So basically, that's just the change to kind of fine tune that and more clarification.
All right. Now, the Finance Committee heard this, Janice.
Yes.
And they were three in favor, three opposed, and three abstained.
Three abstained, yes. This is a rare vote for us. We spent a considerable amount of time speaking with Tessa, who did a wonderful job answering our questions and explaining the thought process behind this. The reason for the vote falls this way. So there were three on our committee that were in favor of making the change as is. There were three on our committee that felt as though we needed some more research around this, and that the current bylaw as written was overly restrictive. So we had some unanswered questions as to why stitched handles.
The current bylaw that she's proposing.
Correct.
The current, opposed amendment.
I'm sorry, the current proposed amendment was overly restrictive. We also had some concerns about the economic impact on local businesses. As folks who watch the Finance Committee meetings are aware, you know, we are keenly in support of and doing our best to promote economic growth within town, to support small businesses, and to ensure that we're creating an environment where they can thrive. So we had some concerns about putting additional restrictions around our businesses in town. The three that abstained chose to wait until town meeting to vote with the hopes that between now and town meeting, we would have additional information as to why some of the language in the bylaw was chosen, as it was.
And is the proponent expecting to provide you with that information?
Yes. Tessa, as I said, did a wonderful job and said that she will be coming back in front of the Finance Committee, either before town meeting or at town meeting, to provide additional information. So while we're here, I do want to talk about the fact that we do have some abstentions this year, which is also unusual for the Finance Committee. And we agreed at the beginning of this year's warrant that if anyone on the committee felt like we didn't have sufficient information to make an informed decision, and we couldn't advise the voters from a place of knowledgeable and confident position, that that member would abstain. So as we get to the articles where we have abstentions, I will speak to that as well.
And that's, that's a good point. You know, that can happen under any article, can't it?
It certainly can.
There's a hearing, there's a warrant hearing, you take a vote, new information comes up, and at town meeting, when I, you know, call for the main motion and then call for the board endorsements, they may not be the same because there may be new information.
That's exactly, that's exactly correct. You know, I think what sometimes is lost upon the citizens is the amount of time that passes between when a warrant is finalized, when a warrant hearing is voted, and when we get to the meeting. And throughout that process, the warrant kind of moves through different groups, and each group brings up different questions, concerns, comments, suggestions. So I know that it's a great source of frustration for many citizens to get to town meeting and have amendments and motions and changes, but all of those are reflective of the process that happens between when a warrant is finalized, or certified, I believe, and when it actually gets to town meeting. This article is a perfect example. I do believe that by the time we get to town meeting, we will have additional information, and that information will factor into decisions, and those decisions could in fact change from what you see in the vote here.
So, and particularly when it comes to the Finance Committee's report that goes out to all citizens before the meeting, the vote or the description in there may not be what people hear on the floor, and that's because things change.
Exactly. The timeline with that as well has some long legs. The Finance Committee report was actually completed yesterday.
Yes.
So that it will go to print, which means that we have, you know, a good solid two, two and a half weeks before we go to town meeting. So I encourage voters to read through the report. It is a source of good information. It's the best information we had at the time. If there are changes from the Finance Committee's positions on articles between yesterday and the 16th, we will speak to those on the floor of town meeting.
Okay. So Article 7, back to moving money around.
Yes.
This is amending the capital plan.
Correct.
Tell us, if you would, just generally, in 15 words or less, what is the capital plan, and then what is this doing?
Sure. Well, the capital plan takes all of the capital, so monies we spend on our buildings and schools and all the projects that we earmarked on that long list that you got at town meeting of all the projects we were going to do for the year.
Okay.
It was all listed, and it was all voted as, individually, but as a lump sum too. So what we're doing is we're taking one of the line items on that list, and we're modifying it. So one of the line items on that list was for $12,000 to do a RFP, you know, preparation only, to look at a town school.
You know, RFP is a request for a proposal.
Proposal, correct, sorry. Should have explained that. But, you know, one of the things I realized when I got here is, there's a software out there and a program called, from Dude Solutions, and the program's called School Dude, and people think that's funny and maybe, you know, get a smile from everybody, but it's actually a very good maintenance software.
Is it an app a high school student wrote?
No, it's not, believe it or not. It's a company called Dude Solutions, and they do financial and maintenance.
Okay.
It's actually, I've used it for years in a prior town, and it's a great software. But what they offer as part of that is they do a facilities needs assessment. They're part of a purchasing collaborative, so we don't have to worry about normal procurement issues. The state of Massachusetts authorizes it, and we can just purchase direct from them. So we got a price from them, and it was actually a great price. The software, cost of the software and the facilities needs assessment for all our town buildings, to include the school buildings, came in at approximately $75,000. So we took that number, and we said, all right, well, rather than go out and, you know, take time to do an RFP, just to come back and ask for more money, really, I mean, one of the things that, when I got here, I noticed was missing was this, you know, we're generating these capital plans every year, but we don't have an accurate list of what's wrong with our buildings, you know? What are the things that need to be done, the deficiencies, the things we need to fix for the next 20 years? This plan that we're proposing will do that. This company will come in, they'll take a look at all of our buildings, identify any sort of structural deficiencies, you know, roofs that we need, they'll inventory all of our equipment, our boilers, our furnaces, and all of this will be now integrated into this program. They'll all be barcoded, especially all the equipment, and there'll be a list of replacement parts and things we do, so they'll all tie into a nice maintenance schedule, and that's what I'm proposing to do.
And this is separate from the public safety facility buildings?
Correct. This is all stuff we need to, yeah, this is all stuff we should have.
Okay.
So what we're going to have, and at the end of this, is we'll get a list of all of our buildings and a spreadsheet for the next 20 years of priority, you know, and they'll prioritize all the work. And a list every year of what we should be doing from now until, you know, 2028, you know? Right on down the line. And the benefit of this is we're able to take the savings, some of the savings we had from, you know, Essex and Whittier, and some monies that we had in unpaid bills, because we didn't use all that, and we're able to fund it with this year's budget money. So we're not asking the town for any more money that was already allotted. We're using the savings and some of the monies from unpaid bills to actually fund this. So we'll be able to do this this year and get to work right away. And what I will say is, if anybody has any more questions on this, is the FinCom has, Finance Committee rather, has called a tri-board meeting on October 9th.
Correct.
I believe. And at that meeting, representatives from this company, Dude Solutions, will be there to make a presentation.
So they'll explain what they're going to have.
To explain what the software is, what we're getting, and, you know, what we're going to move forward with, so.
Okay. And how did the FinCom come down on this?
So we voted 8 to 1 in support of this. There is so much good in this article, it's hard to know where to start. First and foremost, having a comprehensive and objective assessment of the maintenance and ongoing needs of our buildings in town has been a top priority for the Finance Committee for at least the last five years. So, you know, the taxpayers trust us with their money, and we invest that, we build structures and buildings, and the maintenance of those buildings are critical to longevity of those buildings. So when this came before us, we were delighted that we were, A, going to have a new tool in our toolkit that will allow us to track and project those costs out for five to 10 years even. And we were also very, very happy that this was going to be an objective assessment. Because as you can imagine, when we rely on individual departments to give us an assessment of their facilities, it's difficult to understand how best to balance the needs, because we can't always take care of everything every year. So the one clarification I do want to make on this article is, the Finance Committee's vote was not necessarily for the specific software program of School Dude. Instead, we remain agnostic on the software. Instead, our vote here is support of moving the $75,000 within the current budget to secure a software program that will accomplish this goal. The one abstention on this vote was simply from one of our members who felt like they didn't have enough understanding as to what the next steps would be once the assessment was completed.
So again, more information?
More information.
Okay.
Yep.
But the action, or at least the proposed motion at this point, is to amend the capital plan as stated in the warrant, et cetera. It doesn't necessarily say you got to use School Dude.
Exactly.
So it's really, I guess, up to the, if it passes, it's up to your discretion what to use.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Next is Article 8. And 8, 9, 10, 11 are all a specific genre of town meeting articles, zoning articles. And some of these can get a little bit gnarly for simple folks like me that not used to reading a lot of this stuff. So I've asked the Chair of the Planning Board to come in, Heidi. So let's start with Article 8. And let me, why don't you just outline, and as I understand it, the expectation is that you're, because it's in two parts, the plan is to only move one part?
Yes, I'm happy to give an overview, and thank you for the opportunity to explain. I think the more we can talk about the zoning proposals in advance, the more prepared voters are at town meeting. So I appreciate the opportunity to.
Sure.
Give big picture reasons about why we're proposing these, and then also sort of the technicalities of how the motion will work. First of all, backing way up, the first two articles that we're presenting have a specific goal, and it's to increase the vibrancy of our downtown area. They are specific to the Central Business District, which is the immediate area of Market Street, Hammett Street, part of Central, South Main, and Depot Square. So it's really the nucleus of our village area.
When you say two articles, you mean 8 and 9, or the two parts?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
So for the moment, I'm speaking specifically about the Central Business District, which is very localized. And I think it's important for people to understand that, because as we start to talk about changes, I want to make it clear that it's not a change that's going to affect the whole town, but just our downtown if it passes. And within that very localized downtown area, also within only a very specific type of building, a mixed-use building, where there's commercial and residential under one roof. So again, we're like eagle eye zoning in on a particular kind of building in a very particular location in town.
So it's only the buildings that, say, on the first floor have a donut shop, and upstairs are apartments?
Correct.
Okay.
And our view, longstanding view in Ipswich, is that this is a great type of building and use to have in our downtown, because when people live above businesses, they become customers of the businesses. So we believe it contributes to a more vital downtown, where people utilize the services that are available. And we also know that this is a desirable type of housing, because people who perhaps don't have cars have easy access to transportation on the train station, or can walk to get to their jobs and to the services that are needed, or to recreation, like the library and the town hall. So this is our hope, is that we'll be stimulating the activity downtown and creating more housing for people who need to live in small-scale housing close to services. Our specific proposal in Article 8 is that we allow increased density of residences in that type of building in the downtown area. And a simplified way of explaining it is that the number of apartments on a property is limited to parcel size. It's a formula, and parcel size is the defining threshold factor.
And that formula is somewhere else in the zoning bylaw?
Correct. And we would like to make it such that if two apartments are allowed on a property now, if this passes, three might be allowed. If three are allowed today, and this passes, five might be allowed. So it's an incremental increase that's always going to be capped based on the size of the parcel.
Okay.
So it's a density increase.
All right. And the second part of Article 8 was an administrative change that you decided not to go forward with.
We're not going to go forward with this. This part of the bylaw is referred to as footnote 11. It's become a rather long footnote, it's half a page, and we had thought about moving it into its own section, but we're going to hold off on doing that at this time.
Okay. So, so folks know, procedurally, the way you'll have to do that is, instead of, as probably, I think, all seven up to this point, the motion has been to move the article as written in the warrant. So what the motion for this one will be, because you only want to adopt or move part of it, Part 1, not Part 2, will be, I move to amend Ipswich zoning bylaw as set forth in Part 1 of Article 8, except the first sentence. And that's because the first sentence was duplicated because you were going to make that administrative change.
Correct.
Okay.
And I will just hearken back to what Janice said about how helpful it is to go through the hearing process and before other boards, and how from the time the warrant is written, it evolves continually.
Sure.
And so this will be a change at the floor, it's the one that is good to do at this time.
Okay. Before we get to the recommendations, just while I'm talking about this procedural aspect, and procedure can be substantive. I just want to read straight out of the book to explain this distinction I was talking about, that an article is not self-starting. It merely stakes out the limits of the area within which the meeting can act. Nothing affirmative may happen, and the moderator may not take a vote unless someone makes a motion. So that's the difference between a motion and an article. And often, as most of these, the article is so clear that it may be suffice to simply move the article, as a lot of these say. But a motion, and that saves a great deal of time, but it goes on to say that this is probably what makes people think that articles are self-starting, main motions that can be voted on directly. They remember voting favorably on the article, but they forget that someone made a short motion to begin with. So that's the distinction between motion and article.
If I could add two more points about Article 8?
Sure.
I would like to remind people that last year, we came forth with an article that was similar, and it needed 2/3 of the vote to pass, and we fell just shy of that, I think by just under 30 votes. So we, taking into account the comments we heard last time, changed what was proposed. And I think it's important for people to understand that this is not the same proposal as last year. Last year's also incorporated the General Business District area, which encompasses the train station area. This year, we are not talking about the General Business District, only the Central Business District. So it does not affect the train station, parking lot, or any other property in the General Business District.
Okay.
And I also want to remind that this allowed density bonus, the more intense density, is only by special permit. So should an application come forward in the future, it would still require public hearings, notice to neighbors, and confirmation from the board.
All the procedural protections that are afforded to people.
It would not be automatic.
And you mentioned the quantum of vote, the 2/3, as opposed to our majority. Just a reminder that all zoning articles are 2/3 votes. So just so people know that. So Janice, tell us about this.
So.
Your folks were...
We were 6 to 3.
6 to 3.
On this article. And, you know, I think what is sometimes lost on the zoning articles in the complexity is that each change that we make will actually affect the town for years to come. So last year, as Heidi mentioned, this came before town meeting in a different form. We do give tremendous credit to the Planning Board that they took that feedback, went back, and adjusted the article to a point where it addressed the vast majority of the concerns that folks had. We still are left with a split vote on this particular article around the issue of density. So as, as you all can imagine, and as you've heard at Zoomies and wherever else you go in town, density seems to be a hot topic right now and a personal choice. As we look at the positive effects of increasing the density downtown, which six of us did on the committee, we see that there's true economic development activity that can happen by increasing the ability of someone's, someone to live downtown within the business district. And that same argument was used against this article, in that there are those in the committee that feel as though we have met the density threshold that is sufficient for our town, and that continuing to increase density, even in a small district, has a negative impact upon the people who currently live and work there. So as we go into this meeting, I'm sure there will be plenty of discussion on both sides. If you favor increasing density downtown to make it more affordable for folks to live and work and shop in the same general neighborhood, then a yes vote on this article is warranted. If on the other hand, you do not wish to see increased density in the immediate downtown area, then a no vote is warranted.
Okay. And so you were 6 to 3.
We were.
Also, the, just so folks know, the Select Board was 4 to 1 in favor, with 1 against, and the Planning Board was 4 to 1, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So related to that is, 9 is the parking regulations. Again, just in downtown?
Yes, same thing. Not the General Business District this time, only the Central Business District, which is again, Market Street, Hammett, Central, parts of South Main and Depot Square. And in this instance, we have found a hindrance that exists in our current bylaw, and we're looking to remove this hindrance. When you have a mixed-use building, again, with a business and residential element, our bylaw currently requires that the parking for the apartments absolutely be on the same parcel. If parking cannot be provided on the same parcel, the landowner doesn't even have the opportunity to come forward and present an idea to the town. And we know that there are buildings downtown that have unused vacant floor space because they don't have parking on site. These are buildings in the Depot Square area and on South Main, where the building footprint actually takes up the whole lot. So it's impossible to have a parking spot on site. We believe that there are property owners out there who own multiple properties downtown, where if they could put an apartment or condo on one parcel and a parking spot literally almost next door on another parking lot, or a lot parcel that's owned by them, they should have the opportunity to bring their proposal forth and have it be have the opportunity to bring their proposal forth and have it be heard. And so that's what we are seeking to do, to allow an exemption that would allow off-site parking in these instances when the parking could be designated elsewhere, either through ownership on a nearby lot or a long-term lease on a nearby lot.
Would that be by special permit, application?
Absolutely. Special permit.
All that stuff?
All of the lease terms would have to be understood if that was the way the parking would be arranged. Again, it would be notification publicly in advance and case by case. So we would have to be convinced. And we still have certain standards to meet, too. We would have to be sure that there would be nothing contrary to the public interest. And our, our view is that the parking would not be allowed on street. This is not what we're talking about, nor in the town-owned parking spaces in the public lots. It would have to be through designated ownership on another lot, perhaps by the, again, the same property owner who's looking to create the residences or through a lease arrangement. And so we feel it's reasonable. It's, again, not a guarantee, but it's a way for somebody, instead of being turned away, which has happened in the past. And we are sympathetic with these property owners who have empty space in their building that could be utilized so that they have a means of coming forward.
And the planning board was unanimous in support of this?
Yes, absolutely.
And the select board was four to one in favor and the finance committee was seven to two?
Seven to two, right. So unlike the previous article, this does not necessarily increase density that wouldn't already exist. So we supported this article because we do believe that we want to give business owners, and again, that economic development piece, an opportunity to fully utilize the buildings and the properties that they own. I think it's worth re-emphasizing what Heidi said. This article, should it pass, does not allow people who have an apartment in one of the buildings downtown to park on the street or in the municipal lot. And I think that's a common misunderstanding around this article. Instead, what it says is that right now for those buildings that do not have land associated with them, they can essentially lease a parking spot nearby from either themselves or from another owner and use some unused space within the building for housing. So we supported this seven to two. The two individuals who were opposed to it had concerns around our ability to enforce. So the enforcement of this article would take place on two fronts. First, on a day-to-day basis, ensuring that the individuals who fall under this provision aren't parking on the street or in the municipal lot. And how would that affect our current requirements for downtown parking? And secondly, that the lease would be reviewed on a regular basis to ensure that that provision is still in effect.
Okay. So that's one through nine. We're going to take a short break and then we're going to come back for Part Two of the moderators' town meeting preview. Thank you.
I just remembered, it's election day. Are you going to vote?
I don't know. I don't think I'll have time today.
Millions of eligible voters in America never make it to the polls or even register to vote. When you don't vote, you're letting other people make decisions for you and pick the things your taxes will pay for. Voting is more than a civic duty. It gives you a voice about the priorities and the future of your community and our nation. Voting gives you a seat at the table.
Welcome back. We're picking up with Article Ten, revisions to the accessory apartments. Heidi, tell us about this one.
Okay. Accessory apartments are applications that are typically heard by the zoning board and they've asked us to clean up their bylaw, which has been on the books for decades. It is a long one with many requirements and it's possible to be streamlined and made more realistic. So backing up, an accessory apartment is an apartment in a single-family home under the same roof. It's at a maximum, one bedroom and one bathroom. The owner has to live on site in either the main part of the house or in the apartment.
What we think of as like an in-law apartment?
Exactly. And this kind of housing, again, becoming more popular as multiple generations are living under one roof. It's also a great means of somebody who is perhaps a senior who needs to have income in order to stay in their home to create an apartment in it. So there's a lot of benefit to this kind of housing in Ipswich. There are, again, many requirements. I've just limited, I've listed some of them, but there are also some that aren't realistic anymore. Like, there's a provision that says the apartment can't be more than 25% of the gross floor area. We think that if the apartment size is limited to 900 square feet, that's sufficient and that we don't need to say proportionately it can't be more than a quarter of the house. So we would like to change that part of the bylaw to eliminate the 25% reference. We'd also like it to be possible to have an accessory apartment on a parcel, I'm sorry, on a property that is a quarter acre in size. So the parcel size will change from being a 15,000 square foot minimum to a 10,000 square foot minimum in our rural districts. So those are two material changes. All of the other changes really are eliminating redundancies because the same criteria are listed multiple times and we would like to streamline.
Make it simpler.
Yes.
And the planning board was unanimous in favor of this?
We were. Yes, we are.
And the select board was, too?
Yes. Finance committee went eight to one on this with the one person opposing feeling as though the changes didn't go deep enough.
I will add, too, that there are some clarifications on the requirements. So, for example, there has to be 12 feet of common wall area or 500 square feet of common floor ceiling area if the apartment is on a different level than the main house. And the view was that these would be additional ways of regulating and making sure that a house continues to look like a house. And again, the intention is to allow the apartments without really the neighbors being affected or there necessarily being changes on the exterior.
So can I expect this one person to move to amend it to make it go deeper?
I don't anticipate that. I think this is another situation where additional information will come forth between when we had our hearing and town meeting that will satisfy that person.
And the town manager mentioned the October ninth tri-board meeting.
Yes.
Just so folks know, tri-board is the three key boards that sort of manage things in town, the select board, the finance committee, and the school committee. Might there be more information on that, on this at that point?
There will not be. We are tightly managing that agenda because what we've found in the past, that sometimes when we get the three boards together, it becomes a hodgepodge of a meeting and difficult to corral. So we will have a fixed agenda on the ninth. We will be first and foremost looking at a financial review of the first quarter of FY19, which is our first budget. We will be looking to sync up the goals for the three boards. We've each gone through a goal-setting activity for this year. We will be looking at capital planning process and as a part of that, the school dude presentation, as we discussed. And then we will be planning for town meeting along the lines of motions and articles and speakers.
I can just support you in your, your point about managing a large body of people.
Exactly.
It's critical to keep a tight leash.
It is.
On the tri-board, let me say this, that, just as a footnote here, I know you're used to footnotes.
Could be long.
It won't be that long, I promise. But I've talked, over the eight years I've been moderator, talked to town council about many, many different things, about how towns, different towns vary. And he pointed out that it's fairly unique to have a tri-board. And he thinks it's a good idea. And I do, too, but along the lines of, as you say, rein things in. Because you've got, there's an old line about, I can't remember who said it, but a committee, you know, a mule is a horse designed by a committee. You know, I mean, you've got, it's got nine, seven, however many people. And you've got to make it on one position. And it's difficult. So then when you have three of them.
Right.
It's all the more, but...
Well, when you think about it, when we bring the three boards together with the members and the secretaries and the financial support, we had Tony in, we have 25 people in the room. So defining the agenda in advance, staying to the agenda so that we can set expectations for the viewers is critical. And I will say that, you know, we, this is something that the three chairs have talked about. We are looking to do this quarterly this year. We believe that one key lesson learned from last year's school building vote was that we need more coordinated and cohesive leadership amongst the boards. And this is the beginning of that process. We won't fix it overnight, but it's a great start. So for those citizens who would like to better understand how the three boards work together and what the individual responsibilities are, I invite you to come down on the ninth. If you're only going to get out to one meeting this year, the tri-board meeting is really the best bang for your money.
And on that, if I could jump in for the first time this year, and we proposed and talked about it, when we do the budget presentation in January, we're going to do that as a tri-board meeting.
Yes.
For the first time. So we're presenting the budget to all three boards.
And that will be March sometime?
No, early January.
January?
Yep.
Oh, the beginning of it, before?
Exactly.
I would like to say that's not the beginning of the budget season.
Starts now.
It never ends. Budget season never ends.
The document you see in January will be a culmination of a lot of work between now and then.
Okay. Let's move on to Article 11 is clarifying revisions to some parts of the code.
Exactly. And this is in two parts again, and it's intended to be a rather simple definition change of lot area firstly, and that's recommended by town council. He did have an opportunity over the past year to have to refer to this definition and felt the language could be improved. And then secondly, the other clarification has to do with the building permit and certificate of occupancy requirements that the building inspector seeks. Right now, we have sort of a long section with a list and we've decided to streamline that to a couple of sentences, again, putting this in, in terms of what the building inspector deems necessary for a building permit and a certificate of occupancy.
And the planning board was unanimous in support, as was the select board. And again, the FinCom was eight to one.
Yes.
And one...
Voted along the same lines.
Looking for more information?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Now we're out of zoning, but don't go away because we want to hear your thoughts on Article 16. So next is Article 12. 12, 13, and 14 are all articles sponsored by the Government Study Committee. And the Government Study Committee, so people know, is a small group of people appointed by the select board, correct?
Correct.
And they're charged with reviewing bylaws that need changing and changes to the charter and the like?
Correct. And they've been taking a look at that for a while now, I don't want to say at least a little over a year, anyway. And they were the board that brought forward last year to change the town manager requirements.
To removing the requirement to live?
To live right away. It was like your second, end of your first year or your second contract or something like that.
Next week.
And did this...
Only in six months.
Did that ever make it through? That had to go through the legislature to amend it and it got passed. And just so folks know, there are three, and I will not get into the weeds on this, but there are three different ways to amend a town charter. These three articles are under probably the easiest one and they all require a simple majority vote, not a two-thirds. Because what each of them is going to do is ask the selectmen to petition the legislature to make the changes. And it's a lower, simple majority, not two-thirds, because the catch is that the legislature will make sure it's done right.
Correct.
So tell us about number 12.
Article 12 is probably the easiest of the three. It's basically just changing the gender.
Gender neutral.
Yeah, just, thank you. Gender-neutral language in the bylaws, taking out the he's and she's and putting in, you know, select board and the boards, committee's name, town manager, select board, et cetera, et cetera. So it takes out any of that.
The selectmen, select board?
Yep.
Were unanimous in favor of that, as was the finance committee?
Correct, yep.
And this is just part one, if I could clarify that, this is just part one. This is the charter. There's also the bylaws that will be back at a later date to do that. It's a little different process and will, a little longer because we have to go through and do it and clean it up and...
And 13 is updating the town charter with regard to the select board charge?
Yeah, adding some, the charges, the charge of the select board, giving a little more clarity, I guess. One of the things that the Government Study Committee noticed that nowhere in there, and they've stated this a few times, was nowhere where it said the select board was responsible to bring forward a balanced budget. So they wanted to really get that language in here. And they also wanted to talk about long-term visioning and strategic planning for the select board to really charge them with that. And this language was, again, as we stated before, like what was originally proposed versus what ended up in here was, you know, after meeting with all the committee members and, you know, getting some feedback, this language was tweaked and this is where we stand on this now, the stuff that's in bold, it was just printed in the newspaper as well, bold and underlined, is the new language that's being added.
So as the moderator, one thing I'm responsible to do is to promote questions. One thing, the way I look at this, and I'll just let folks read it to themselves, but what is the definition of a collaborative process? And the other question I have is, what are the definitions of participants and stakeholders? It seems to me that, I'm a lawyer, you know? I'm into words. We ask a lot of questions about words.
Yeah.
And when, when things are put into, you know, charters is really like the town constitution.
Right.
I wonder what that means.
Well, and that was some of the questions in concern, both on the select board. That's why, as you can see, the select board was, you know, recommended town meeting, rat them.
Right.
So they, they still wanted some more information and wanted to, you know, just think about it, you know, think on it a little longer. And I think there were similar concerns on the finance committee.
Actually, let me tell you, Janice. I see that the FinCom was unanimous opposed to this.
That is correct. And it's also highly unusual that the finance committee comes to town meeting with a unanimous opposition to an article, partly because of the collaborative process that gets us to a warrant.
Whatever that means.
Whatever that means. But in this instance, I think it's important to take a step back. As Tom mentioned, when we talk about the town charter, we are essentially talking about the constitution for the town of Ipswich. And making changes to that document is significant and should not be done lightly, nor should it be done if there is any danger whatsoever that it actually creates more confusion than it resolves. So for those of you who have spent any time watching or attending finance committee meetings, you will often hear during our warrant hearings us ask the question, "What problem does this solve?" We ask that question, not to be difficult, but we ask that question because we believe that it is part of our fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the decisions we make resolve issues and do not create unforeseen issues. So we were always looking to avoid collateral damage. And this article in particular, we unanimously oppose this article for two reasons. First, we don't understand the problem it is solving. Second, we believe that what this language does is introduces ambiguity into the charter. In our discussions with the town manager and with amongst the committee, what we decided is that while there could be clarification as to the specific roles and responsibilities of different boards in town, that that would be better handled through a bylaw, which is more flexible and allows us to come back, as you've seen with our zoning bylaws, to amend in the future, as opposed to making this level of change in the charter, which requires us to go before the state legislator in the future if we find that folks do not understand what a collaborative, as opposed to a cooperative, process is, or they do not understand who is a participant and who is a stakeholder and who is an owner. We did not, at our hearing, have the benefit of asking these questions of the Government Study Committee. And I do understand that they have put forth additional information over the last few days. Even with that information, we remain opposed to making this type of change at this level to the town charter.
What was the additional information they proposed?
There, I believe Gary Champion published an article further explaining their understanding of those terms, which is helpful, but it's not within the article.
Right. And it doesn't matter what they think, it matters what's written.
Exactly. And, you know, as we, as we, the, the way town government is set up, intentionally, we turn over on the boards... turn over on the boards, and as people change on the boards, it is critical that the understanding of these terms and definitions is codified in a way that that translates consistently from person to person and board to board.
Just looking at this here closer, this term, quote, "balanced municipal operating and capital budget," close quote.
Right.
That seems to me to be a run-on of two different terms.
It really is. It's, A, it is a moot point in that we cannot by law present a deficit budget to the town meeting for a vote. So we have to stay under the levy limit, and we have to adhere to that. So we're not quite certain where or how balanced is defined, whether that's balanced between municipal and school funding, but if it's simply balanced as far as expenditures and revenues, that is a moot point. And we're also not quite clear on the second half of that and how that is to be applied within the budget process.
I could speak to this one as well.
Sure.
Because the planning board did have the benefit of hearing a presentation by the Government Studies Committee and commended them for, we know a lot of meetings that went into their questioning of towns like Ipswich and their review of other towns' bylaws and charters to see how those were written, and they answered our questions as well. So we, as a board, were pleased to see this language and supported it and felt that the planning process in Ipswich is something that needs oversight from a particular body, and we felt that it, being an elected body, and the selectman was appropriate. And we considered our role as planners, too. Of course, we have our community development plan, which is only updated and changed with capital funds, which we go to the select board for. And we also know that there are big projects looming in Ipswich that are outside of our purview, like failing water pipes, a need for a public safety building, you know, climate change and ocean rise and what's going to happen along our floodplain border. There are other, you know, projects that will affect the school department and the school buildings. So it makes sense that there be one body that is looking at the whole big picture and setting priorities for when are things going to happen over the next 20 years, what's going to happen first, and how do we tie together everybody who has an interest in all of these things? And we felt that it would be smart on the town's behalf to think about the big picture and not take items one by one or in silos, depending on who was leading them. So we were strongly in favor of this language, which we learned, too, is written on the town website in terms of the select board's responsibility for long-term planning, yet again isn't codified in our bylaws and charter.
Okay. A couple other questions come to mind, but let's go on to the next one. The next one is Article 14, updating the town charter, the town manager appointments.
Yeah, this was, I think, just some cleanup language. Talks about taking out a section, inspectors. All the inspectors in town are part of the, hired by the town manager, they're no longer, you know, separate appointees or anything like that, so that was really to clean that up. The second was adding in, and this was sort of a typo in this, but we fixed it in the motion, civil defense director, and what they put in was the Ipswich Emergency Planning Agency. That actually is the Ipswich Emergency Management Director. So those will be changed in the motion. You have the revised motion in the air, but basically we're just changing those, clarifying that title. And also, lastly, inserting a new section, which was proposed by our town council, George Hall, was to kind of clarify what you talked about before with regard to charter changes.
Right.
So there's three, it'd be three steps.
Different ways to do it.
Yeah, different ways to do it. And he'll speak to that at town meeting floor, but basically just sets out a, you know, step-by-step process to, you know, to make charter changes in the future as we move forward, so the town can decide if they want to implement that or not.
Okay. And the select board decided to recommend at the town meeting-
They wanted some additional information, and we wanted to get clarification on the emergency planning agency, and we cleaned that up, so.
And Janice, the FinCom was six to two against it with six and one abstention?
Correct, correct. So our, our concerns with this article, for the two that were against and the one in favor, I'm sorry, one abstention, were around some of the clerical issues that Tony have now addressed. We also struggled with this article because unlike the zoning articles where we can see the strike-through of what is being removed and what is adding in, we didn't have the benefit of that in this particular article.
And the plastic bag one.
And the plastic bag as well, so, and I think that this is something that will naturally is easily rectified going forward, but we think it's critical to understand what language is being removed and what is being replaced. So we had a slight favorable vote for this article with six in favor, two against based on some of the issues that we mentioned, and one abstaining because we were not clear on what was being removed.
So it was six against it and two in favor of it?
I'm sorry, yes, six against, two in favor.
And one abstention.
And again, much like the previous article, we too believe that it's important to have a strong planning and strategic process throughout town. We just don't believe that the charter is the place to codify that. We believe that the bylaws are the correct place to do that. And as part of the tri-board meeting, we will be talking about long-term strategic planning and capital planning and the process therein.
Okay. So 15 is a gift of land, there's a, this is brought by the Conservation Commission who, which had issued some conditions, and then I think there was a tax lien on the property?
Yeah, this is truly a housekeeping article. What happened is this, back in 2004, to show you how long ago this was, the, as part of a condition of a permit back then, this land was to be gifted to the town. Although it was approved, all the documentation was done, and unfortunately, there was an error on the town hall side in the office where, it never got recorded.
Okay.
So the gentleman or the individual who thought that they were transferring the land to the town, thought it was done in 2004, it never got recorded. So in hindsight, this, you know, a tax bill never should have been generated from 2004 on, but unfortunately, it was because it never got recorded. So we never took the gift legally.
The, the idea here is to waive the back taxes and take the property?
Correct, because the back taxes technically should have never happened based upon the decision, and then we'll take the parcel we should have taken in 2004.
Okay.
And it's a small piece, and there'll be a couple of slides on this to show the exact parcel where it is, and, you know, Alicia and/or somebody from the Conservation Commission will get up and speak to this as to what happened. But in perfect clarity, it was something that was supposed to be done in our, in the town halls, you know, in the conservation office in town hall. It didn't happen, so we're just trying to look to clean this up and fix it.
Okay. And did the planning board vote on this?
We did not.
No? Okay. And the select board was unanimous in favor of it, but the finance committee was three to six in favor. Tell us about that.
Right. We, so we opposed by a majority in this article, which I'm sure seems a little confusing to folks because why look a gift horse in the mouth? We had some deep concerns on this because we were not able to ascertain whether or not there was due diligence on the part of the town or the Conservation Commission as to the current state of the land. As a finance committee, our primary responsibility is to advise the voters in a fiscally responsible way, and we felt that we could not do that on this article. This land has been sitting vacant since 2004 or longer. We have no understanding or information as to whether or not it has been contaminated or polluted. We don't know if there's a clear right to the land or if there have been liens on it in the past. So we had many questions as to the condition and the viability of the land and whether or not we would be responsible long-term for any kind of remediation that comes with the land. So we think it's important that the voters understand that free isn't always free and that if we do accept this land and later find out that there are conditions that need to be remediated, that that is a liability to the town that right now we cannot scope or anticipate. So we oppose this article. Six of us opposed, three were in favor of it, but we would be willing to reconsider this if information is presented showing us that there is clear title and there has been a clear order of conditions for the land.
So to follow the play, if it becomes apparent that there's, you know, toxic waste or oil spill or something there, and we take the property-
We own that.
And then-
Yeah, we own the full liability of that.
And have to clean it up.
Exactly.
And comply with all sorts of state and federal regulations.
As well as ongoing monitoring of that cleaning.
Okay. Heidi, 16 is the stretch energy code. This is brought by the selectmen, at least.
Town manager, select board.
Yeah, manager. But can you tell us about this?
Basically, the stretch energy code is a couple of things. It basically promotes more energy-efficient building, basically to use less, you know, fossil fuels in the long run, to build tighter commercial and residential buildings. It was really a big pushback in, you know, 2008 and 2010 timeframe. A lot of towns were adopting back then.
But what is the code?
It's basically, it takes, so your building code has an energy code, you know, so for layman's terms, it's basically, you know, take the energy code and put it on steroids, you know, for the most part, back then, back in 2008. So basically, it was geared to try to get a 20% increase in efficiency in homes, you know, to so have, you know-
So window tightness, insulation, things like that.
Window tightening, a thing called the blower door test that's done on a single-family home, you know.
But that's what I mean.
Yeah.
The summary here doesn't tell me what it is.
Right, exactly. So that's what it is. It's basically to make the buildings tighter, to have, you know, circulate air, to have fans that run continuous, things like that, to basically make the house better and more, you know, and create a healthier living environment, basically, you know.
And that's all written out in the state code.
And that's all written on the, and it's part, it's an appendix on AA, I believe, 115 dot AA, and it's part of the building code. You know, town, local adoption is how you, you know, whether or not you accept that section is up to the towns, but it's, it's been part of the building code since 2008 to 10 timeframe.
And let me ask you this, the summary also refers to many HERS raters.
HERS raters.
What are those?
Home energy rating specialists.
Okay.
That's what they stands for.
Okay.
And they come in and they do what I referred to earlier, called the blower door test.
Gotcha.
So what it is, is they work with the homeowners when they're building new homes throughout the process. They come in and check it during framing to make sure that they put sealer under the seals of the house. They check the ductwork before you tighten everything up to make sure that it's gonna, it's tight enough and it's been sealed properly. And then, most importantly, they check the insulation after that's done. So when you get to the end of the house, you're not standing there hoping that, you know, the house is going to pass. So a blower door test basically puts reverse pressure on the house, you know, so it creates suction inside to create, to make sure that, you know, the air infiltration isn't, you know, exceeding a certain-
Right.
Quotient, in this case, it's called a 55, it leaves a score we have to hit, a score of 55, which is, you know, a formula that's got a whole bunch of information that goes into it, but that's what you're shooting for to, to hit there. And that's just on single-family homes. On the commercial side, it's, you know, again, making sure the buildings are tight, but it talks about, you know, LED lighting and making sure you use proper heating equipment, high-efficiency equipment, things like that.
And does it require people to make changes if they don't comply?
Only on, on new construction, you have to comply through the process. I think if you're remodeling a residential, you know, minor alterations to your home, this doesn't apply to you.
Okay.
You just follow the straight building code. And I was actually incorrect in my assumption because, you know, I'd spent a few years since I've been doing the building code, but this has changed since when I first was involved in it. It used to be more in-depth and involve, you know, minor additions and things like that, but now we're, the building code, they've done two changes to the building code since this first came out, so they made the energy code more restrictive. It's almost, it's closer to what the stretch code is now. So the straight building code on its own is almost where the stretch code is. So this only applies to, and Heidi can certainly jump in here, but it only applies to, I think, buildings, new construction and then buildings over 100,000 square feet, am I right?
Commercial buildings over 100,000 square feet.
All new residential and new commercial over 100,000 square feet.
Right.
Correct.
That's the only thing this would apply to.
Did the planning vote, board take a position on this?
We did, and I can tell you why we are unanimously in favor. We view this as a positive development for Ipswich if it passes. As context, it has already been adopted by 241 towns in Massachusetts, so builders in the vicinity are used to using the stretch code. It does cost a little bit more money, and that is for the builders to have to expend to meet the code. However, if you look at overall building costs, it seems to be a fraction of 1%, and they do have an opportunity for rebates through many programs to help offset the additional costs. Additionally, when these stretch code buildings are built, the, the cost often gets purchased, I'm sorry, passed on to the homeowner in the case of a residence, but we also know that these tighter homes pay an owner back, sometimes within the first year and typically within the second year, so that the energy efficiency is causing a long-term gain for the life of the house in terms of efficiency. So we see it as a win financially for the builder in terms of the rebates, for the new owner in terms of lower utility bills. It also is an important thing for the town because the state has created many new grant programs based on energy efficiency. So on the grant applications, there's a number of criteria that would have to be met, and increasingly, one of the criteria is stretch code participation. So we view adopting this bylaw as an opportunity for Ipswich to be eligible for more grant funds by meeting one of the criteria that's becoming more common. We also think it provides flexibility for builders because under the stretch code, they're able to look at the whole house and how it performs, as opposed to the base code, which requires kind of element by element certain criteria. So they like it because it's flexibility, they can meet the design requirements of their, you know, their customers with more different ways of achieving the same endpoint.
And so your point is if it's easier for the builders, then it fosters building and business and it's less restrictive?
Exactly, and it's actually an assurance and a lower risk for builders and owners. If I understand correctly, even the base code requires the blower door test and the other tests, and by having HERS raider, the home energy rating specialist, involved from the get-go, you're more short of passing those tests, whereas if you don't have that person involved, the test is done and it doesn't pass, then you've got an enforcement issue with the building inspector.
Right.
You've got an expensive fix, and it's a problem, and that's in the long run, more expensive. So it's an advantage to have the guidance of a specialist early on.
And I can tell you, I have some experience in this because I just finished building a house and I had to follow the stretch code, so I have personal experience, and it, the increased expense is minimal. For me, it was probably 3,000 or less, and what I got back by part of the MassSafe program, just by using the high-efficiency furnace and the inline hot water heater, I ended up getting back almost $2,500, you know, in savings. So it was really, and what, you know, you create, at the end of the day, you're creating a better house and a tighter house that uses, you know, decreased gas bills and, you know, oil bills, which is a great thing.
And Heidi, you mentioned 241 towns have adopted this, and just so people know-
Yes.
-there are 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, so if 50 of them are cities, maybe, that there's 300 towns, that's, that's a sizable amount.
And I'll mention Amesbury, Beverly, Boxford, Essex, Gloucester, Hamilton, Newburyport, North Andover, Rockport, Topsfield, and Wenham nearby.
Newburyport's a city, but, okay.
Yeah, so, at any rate, it's common, so builders who are building near us are used to this kind of expectation.
Okay, so the select board were unanimous in favor, as was your board.
Yes.
Janice?
Yes, we went nine-zero in favor of this, and we dug in deep here because we had-
That's a huge win.
Yeah.
We, I don't know that the finance committee's ever been unanimous.
It's true.
Well, the first five I'm aware of.
On something like this that involves-
It is, you're right, Heidi, it is unusual for us to be unanimous on something like this, and kudos to all who provided an extraordinary level of detail. So on first blush, this article gave us concerns that we were in fact overreaching and reaching into people's homes and dictating that they spend money that we consider discretionary. As we dug into the article and learned from our in-town experts and from the actual state code, what this actually does is really relatively minor on the one hand and pretty important on the other. So the minor aspect of it is that we're really looking at an increase of between 1% and 3% on overall construction costs, and that's at a maximum, and the 3% is, tends to be a little bit higher for commercial, and the 1% is more closely aligned with residential. This only applies to new construction. So for everybody out there that's saying, well, I want to put an addition on or I want to renovate my house, this does not apply to you, so we don't need to worry about that. Where we saw the advantages of the stretch code were really around economic development. We have many, many projects in the pipeline that require building coming up. Should this pass, all of those projects would be required to build a better building. And so it is one way that as a municipality, we can encourage quality building within town as opposed to- town, as opposed to building that may or may not last and stand the test of time. We also believe that this supports our long-term goals of climate sustainability. And last but not least, it is an opportunity to bring money into the town. So as was mentioned by participating in the stretch code, we now become eligible for grants in the green, was it, the Green Communities Program?
It's one step closer, right.
So it is, as we believe, a win-win for the town and for the people who are building.
Okay. So the last article, Article 17, has to do with the design and master plan for Bielik Park. Tony, can you tell us about this one?
Sure. For those who don't know, there's been a committee, the Bielik Park Committee has been working on future thoughts and designs, potential uses for Bielik Park, one being what was recently debated in the Selectment's meetings, sorry, Select Board's meetings for the Switch Rattle Artscape. Select Board approved the, we got a grant for that, $30,000, so right behind where the playground is, there'll be a skating structure that's going to be constructed this spring, which we're excited about. But the other piece of that was, is they took a look at the parcel as a whole and took a look at not only the Switch Rattle Artscape, but increased parking and a few other things. They made a very detailed presentation of the Select Board. But one of the things they're missing is money to get a, you know, formalized site plan done and, you know, indicate the three phases and sort of put a master plan together so that can be the template and their finished product. They'd asked for these funds back in the prior town meeting in May, but the article didn't get moved forward, so they're back asking for these funds so they can create that plan and put, you know, fine-tune this project, have an end date, you know, an end presentation for this project.
And then if this passes and they come up with a plan, then there'll be another allocation for funds to do it?
Correct, or exactly, allocation for fixing the parking and whatnot. But one thing I do want to stress is, they're certainly not committing any of the town to, whether it's a public safety building or a school or anything like that that's been discussed about this location. They're basically saying, we need increased parking for the current use that's there, and also they're gearing everything towards like where the playground is and the Switch Rattle Artscape. That's all in that front and left corner of the site. They're leaving the larger parcel open and available, so if the town, whatever they decide to do moving forward, that land will be available and fully developable, so.
And this $15,000 would come from free cash?
Free cash, correct.
Okay.
After DOR certifies it, which will be any day now, so.
Okay. And did the Planning Board vote on this?
We did not.
No. And the Select Board were unanimous in favor, and Janice, you were eight to, eight to zero with one abstention?
Correct.
Against it.
Opposed.
Against it.
That is correct. So I think it's important first and foremost to explain that we are not in opposition to the development, beautification, or improvement of Bielik Park. Our opposition to this article is really one of procedural, in that we believe that this is part of a larger capital planning process. And we, you know, have been frustrated, for lack of better words, at the piecemeal approach to some planning in town. So as we've talked about with the earlier article around the $75,000 for the assessment of the buildings, we would like to see this come back as part of the FY '20 capital planning process and budget so that it is fully integrated with the Public Safety Committee building and the work that they're doing, as well as other initiatives in town. So again, not opposed to the improvements of Bielik, but opposed to doing it outside of a capital planning process.
So your position here, the majority of your committee, is to want to put it into the big picture?
Exactly. So we want to make this decision in context with other priorities for the town.
Well, okay, so after a special town meeting, we adjourn, we don't, excuse me, we dissolve the meeting, we don't adjourn. The annual town meeting, we adjourn because technically, just a little clarification, the voting the week later, that is the last part of the town meeting, the annual town meeting. So thank you all for going through this with me, and I'm hoping that this is a little informative for folks that are watching ICAM to know what to expect. Again, special town meeting is October 16th at 7 o'clock at the IPAC.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.